I want to call this June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting to order. And Ruth, you want to leave us in pledge?
I am the official of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Young? Don't mention any generations, but I do wish you guys to sign the back pages of the land book. So the easiest way to do this is start this side and you're this way. You sign the middle line, you sign the top line, you sign the bottom.
We still have to approve it though.
I mean. I don't know if you have to both want to approve it or not. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I motion to approve. Separate and book. Home favor.
Oh, top, okay.
See, we have mostly supervisor. Too many signatures.
First time, first time my team over here did this. President signed it, passed it over here, and then I was definitely going in this four pages. It's three of them, yeah, and there were copies in the other.
Let's say one. I mean, did Anthony send you because he's going to be out? Write your cell for me just in place and then we'll text you if we need anything. So I don't think, I think we had Michael Taylor for a couple of things today, but.
Do I need to be here for that first thing?
You can if you want. I don't think it's, I don't think you have to. I think everything's a done deal. I don't think we have to use.
No. Ways and dealing.
I make a motion to approve second half payroll six sixteen.
Second.
Home favor. Is everybody checked over the vouchers and invoices? Any question?
No, I just think there's going to be some questions about procedures on the fire ones as usual.
I make a motion to approve vouchers and invoices.
Second.
Home favor. Minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for five seventeen.
Second. Home favor. Of two.
We got a state settlement. And also a reservation of James Black and Shepherd.
You just need to sign it.
I'm sorry they're approving. I'm sorry. I'm sitting here thinking. Regent. Thank you, John.
And two separate things. I move that we approve the estate settlement.
Second. Home favor.
Do we have the resignation? And this is just the resignation of Jamie Black and Shook from the estate of Robert Sloan. Because all of the claims, his services are no longer needed. So I move that we approve his resignation from this case.
Second. Home favor. Ms. Ruth?
All right, so since Amy and Carol here, we can do Anthony's request first. It's his request to hire Carol Tensher. And she is good. Welcome. We're happy to have you.
Well, we appreciate you coming over to meet us. We like to be able to recognize everybody.
And you started what? She started last Thursday.
Okay.
And then it says replace anything really early.
After the estate things.
So we're going to approve the higher effective Thursday.
Mm-hmm, whatever last Thursday.
So what was your Thursday? So I move that we approve Carol Tensher's hire of June eighth.
Second. Home favor.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was short and sweet one.
Okay, so we could do eight and nine. We have Mayor, Mayor Ingram is here. There's a request from the City of Montgomery to place their municipal election county ballot. And also a request for a support letter for West Virginia Department of Transportation on current grant application.
Mayor Ingram, wanna give us a speak?
What do you want to address first here, Commissioner? You want the request for the election to be placed on the ballot?
Yeah.
Okay. We're requesting, we did a charter amendment. I have copies here of that charter amendment. We had council pass it. We had our past first reading. We had a public hearing, had second reading. And it passed there. So it's been duly recognized by the City of Montgomery and we're requesting that the city mayor election, council and recorder be placed on the county ballot in May, the primary. And all the rules have been changed on the charter change that what time the picking ballots and who gets placed on the top and all that stuff. The normal stuff has all been, is in that document that I presented to you. And we would appreciate it if we could put our city election on the county ballot. Canol County has already approved Canol County and Montgomery to be placed on Canol County ballot. And we'd like to do the same thing.
You have any questions, Michelle, that you any concerned?
I just have a random question out of the blue, given what I've heard may have happened in Smithers. Does this include excess lettuces and things like that or just principals in the county government?
And I gave that on, but I think it's just, it's just for the election, the office.
Well, it would because there are no, there aren't special elections. So your, if any measure has to be on your regularly scheduled general or primary ballot. So if your regularly scheduled general ballot is our primary ballot, you would have to go that, that same ballot. When did those special elections go away? So it went away.
Two years ago.
Two, yeah, the election passed two years ago, not this last session, but session before. So they did pass, there was provision in there for cities and counties to have one last special to sink. Anything like, say like your excess letting went out in six, like within five years, but it, it needed an extra year in there at the time sitting quite one of, you could have a special election to sink it up with your general. Election. Yeah, that was, and that, that line was clarified in this past session, supposedly.
Yes. It was.
We got a delegate with us that could tell us about it too.
Yeah.
So, and you know, I also want to talk about the machines. Now, the city would be responsible for coming and getting the machines and putting them in. I don't feel that our maintenance people should be responsible for that.
Well, in his case, there will be action on our county ballot. So it will just be like any other regular election.
Okay.
So they're not just borrowing machines. They're going to be upon our ballot.
Yeah, right.
And you know, can by code charge them what reasonable cost that had their measures of ballot. I mean, there's not, there's certainly be pronouncements or questions, not that much, and they're not hungry to be problem with him. So, but we are, you know, it's separate off those costs to let us know that what the meeting is being informed. At the most, how much does that, how much does that, and then there are issues or something.
And I don't know what Canol County is going to charge us, but I can find out. Appreciate forty-seven, which is that county, it's larger than Canol County. People wise. Footprint wise, we're about equal now. But the voting public majority are in fact.
Regardless, it's going to save the municipalities some money.
Yes, with poll workers and it's just, it's just the right thing to do. It's real confusing. Plus, the other thing municipalities and I know, I think you all know that when you have a municipal election that's in the middle of June, you get very few people to show up. But if it's on county, when it's in the federal, when the federal elections are, presidential elections, they're going to show up and you're going to get more voting public. So you really get a better feel for what the public wants in their communities. I just think it's a better fit all the way around because it definitely pulls more voters.
Well, I agree with everything on, I mean, saves money, pulls more people into vote.
Yeah, and we have no problem paying whatever the, it is to put it on there. And I don't know what.
I just got one, one curious question real quick. What, how much is it going to save the City of Montgomery?
Well, we normally do paper ballots. We've always done paper ballots. So we work with the company down in Spencer and that's, that's an expense. And income compared to answer that question.
I'm just curious, but what each municipality is saying.
I'm sure it will be a savings because, you know, it, it, she'll tell you, you gotta have a meeting to train your poll workers and you have to pay them and then you, you know.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
It'll be a savings. And I just, I just think it's the right thing to do.
Michelle, have all the municipalities reached out to you? We just got three right now, Oak Hill, Fayetteville and Montgomery. Is that right?
Yeah, and we can probably, we've got four years now, learning curves and everything. And you know, the page on Oak Hill elections, Oak Hill's charter amendment did not pass, but they're, sent their election with the county ballot. So, but they, they can bring it up again, the new council can bring it up again if they want. Next meeting if they want to try to pass. But in favor of not reading anyone, that they don't go against all at all. You have to drop any other.
Yeah, I was going to suggest you do that, but, because the other ones are so much smaller, you know, they, it may help them to know or be reminded that it's something they can do.
That had what, five, six people with it?
Yeah. Yeah, and Thurman has, and Thurman has five in the whole town.
Yeah, okay, everybody show up between noon and lunch.
I think, I think.
As a commissioner, we talked about what, what you have to want to charge them. I mean, yeah, the code is pretty clear. It can only be the difference in cost for putting their second ballot. So unless they're going to add second change to the ballot or, you know, something like that, there's, you know, we're not the same number of workers, we're not the same number of ballots you did. None of their costs are different, but they're the cost per measure and per name.
The way I feel about is I don't think we should charge unless it occurs cost on the county. I mean, that's the way I feel about it. It's done for statements, for municipalities, I mean.
It is no, but Montgomery is not a mini issue. I do want to establish our latest city limits. Not sure when, when should we buy the same debt or some issues. I don't have the Morris.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
Half the Morris drives in Canopan.
Right.
Some half of the houses are in there.
But I just made sure we got it all set for that, but there's.
I think the only people that knows exactly where that line is is probably the ambulance and police department because nobody else can hear that. But they kind of.
A little more on my end, but I mean, that's.
So let me ask this question, and I don't know. When it comes time to count ballots, that's all done, and it was incorrect, okay, does Montgomery need to have anyone there?
And then I'll just send you photos like I've done before and fast.
Yeah, welcome to be there.
Right.
Okay, well, I move we approve the request, the request to be on the county ballots.
Second. Home favor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Second item we have that we requested is a support letter. This was all kind of a last minute thing, but the transportation enhancement that was in Department of Transportation, grant application came up and we looked at our finances and we had match money for a transportation enhancement grant to, and I know this might be a dirty word here, but to, to rebuild, reconstruct the tech trail. On the cost of county thing, we've got the match money covered. We've got all that. It's a sixty-eight thousand dollar grant. City has matched it with twelve thousand dollars. And we, we put that money back, but that is to reconstruct the tech trail that will tie into the larger trail that's on the other side of the bridge, one, that one point seven million dollar trail. But this tech trail, I don't know if been there.
No, I'm very familiar with it. I've managed.
It's the, old people can't get there. I mean, it, it was made for tech students.
Yeah.
So we, this is a design grant. This is not a construction grant. And the reason we did the design grant this way, we want twelve thousand dollars cash is because we had twelve thousand dollars to put toward it. We want to lengthen it and take, bring the grade down so that where more people can enjoy the trip. That being said, I just signed an agreement last week with Western University to take all that property, the city property, the mountain, all of the tech property that's not, that does not have a building on it. The city's going to take the football field, all the parking lots, that type of stuff and all the mountain. So what our plan is, well, let me back up, with twelve thousand dollars, we can still do the in-kind stuff. Which we could use the, the property as the in-kind. We're saving that card for when the construction phase comes. So we're going to put the twelve thousand dollars upfront on the planning. And then the construction pays, we'll throw in the property as a match. Which, through the construction, it's going to be settled, a hundred thousand dollars. I think the property will stand the match on that. So that's kind of what we're needing is a support letter just to say we, we've got funding in place. That's not an issue. We just need to know that you guys support what we're doing.
I don't have a problem with it.
I move we approve it.
Second. Home favor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate your service. Appreciate your, your help.
A little late for nine fifteen. Want you to be, Mr. Taylor, it's a state, right? Full time.
That's her.
This is where you say what we're on the turn.
Yeah. Michelle, do, what do you know about the is this the same estate, the copy of the will where we had to sort, make sure we served a copy to all the descendant or the potential beneficiaries and that, that's now been done?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Good. Well, for the public's information, there was a, a copy of a will presented to the commission to be admitted and probate. And the copy could not be admitted and to probate, even though it's only known will to the beneficiaries until every potential beneficiary was served a copy of it. And now that's been done. So I move that we I don't know how to word it on here, approve the copy of Forrest Ladine McFarland's will be admitted for probate.
Second.
Home favor.
Who's got the, that's a resolution. That's probably it right there.
This is, I have it right. Yes.
I guess we could do.
We could probably knock a couple of things out.
Yeah, where is she at?
Well, we can do this without her.
The DRC?
Well, declaring Juneteenth.
Oh, okay, okay. Here she is. You left us. I was lost. Just told her I'm going to take over.
There's that, Ruth.
We're at Juneteenth. Okay, so the governor issued a proclamation declaring Juneteenth a holiday. So here's all the letters to declare a holiday as well.
I mean, we declared Juneteenth as a holiday.
Second. Home favor.
We're just consistent with how we've always done business. When the state declares one, we declare one.
So the next thing on there is this nine-one-one retirement resolution.
And G S G, I think.
Yeah.
Hey, Michelle, can you make sure Ms. Stevens knows? Can you guys reject her or make sure she?
So Jean called the retirement board to get this set up. And she's sort of giving us all kinds of information that I don't think anybody's aware of. So new employees as of June one, not July one, because it's effective the first of March following the resolution. So you pass the resolution in May, so June one, all the new hires are eligible. It's eight and a half percent. Is that right?
They're required to participate, right?
New hires?
Yes.
Right. So, and then so existing employees cannot participate at this point. If they pass legislation later, the way she explained it is you're going to have to go and make up the difference. So if like you're tier one, which I think you're tier one, I'm tier one. That's a four and a half percent is what the employees put in them. In order to transfer it over to this new system, they would have to make up the difference because she said it basically doesn't balance out. So five, six, seven, ten thousand dollars, depending on how many you've been working there and how much you make. So that employee would have to put that much money in to be eligible for that transfer. And she said she doesn't think the counties have been made aware of that. And then even the tier two people who are, it's actually less on the county because we pay nine percent from the first. And this is eight and a half. So we would save half a percent with the employee else to make up the difference. So tier two people, which I think started twenty fifteen and later, they do six percent. So they have to make two and a half percent of on their salary, again, depending on what you make. But the minimum salary we have, they're about to put six thousand dollars in to make whatever she's talking about equal before they can participate.
So what we passed, I know it requires new hires to go into it, but is it still an option for current hires even once the legislation comes through?
If they put that money in. They have to put that money in.
I guess. Um, my, my, my question is, by doing this or by passing it, have we hurt anybody? You know, so right now you don't have to do it. Is there anything that's going to compel you to do it? If you don't want to down the road or is there any reason, is there anything that's detrimental to the people who, how many, have we hired one?
One. We hired one. Well, two.
Okay, so we've hired two.
Okay, well, then he'll have to, he'll have to go back and pay the difference because it wasn't set up.
They don't have to, right or wrong, man?
No, no, it has to.
Okay.
Because he was, well.
He was hired in May.
Hired June first. Yeah, so it's June first. So whoever's hired after June first, which is they haven't started yet, so. Yeah, they, they don't have to make anything up. So the, the lady at the retirement board, she kept us in the home forever. Said basically they're getting a lot of grumbling because it's not fair. People would have been there.
Yeah.
And just so you know, because I'm like, well, if people quit and come back, it doesn't work that way.
I wasn't going to say it up, up and open like this, but I was thinking.
That's exactly what I, I expected. And she also said she thinks a lot of the grumbling was because if you transfer over and you've been there twenty years, then you could pay your difference and retire right then and they think there'd be a lot of people gone. So.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. It should be an option for you is what it should be.
I was just wondering if there's any reason, I mean, it sounds to me like there's no reason to take the option the way the question is, you know, do we want half our staff on one program and everybody new on another one?
It doesn't matter because we have half our staff on partners and half on DSRS and then tier one, tier two, this would just be another little.
You guys think this program will help you with recruiting if we leave it in place? Recruiting and retention?
If somebody, if, 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 you know, a lot of time that's here too, they may opt to buy it because their best employee goes from ten years to like five percent.
And it's also twenty, twenty-year retirement as opposed to tier two sixteen, maybe?
Right.
Yeah.
If somebody with low time, they actually pay the money off into that event.
Not for me, I would not.
They don't have to pay it immediately. They can wait.
You wouldn't retire?
They, they wouldn't have to pay this immediately where they, you know.
If they would transfer, if that legislation has not even passed, but if it did pass, in order to enroll, they would. And I don't know if they might set deadlines and would not, that's fine.
Okay, so. So this sounds like the same people that run P E I A is trying to run this too, right? It's all confusing.
No, the retirement board is pretty straightforward. Yeah, that's another story.
So it sounds like the main thing we need to do is make sure our current staff that qualifies for the option is well informed about the option, right? Like we don't need to undo anything we did. We just need to make sure that everybody knows what they're getting into. And, and I do think we ought to explore other types of incentive retention incentives with regard to that function as a commission. As a commission. Do anything to keep. Employees who serve a certain amount of time.
How many? How many employees? Have you, do you know have your employees and how many years they've been there right now? I mean, I'll top your head, you probably don't, well, you've been there.
Is that anybody made?
No. She'd been there like thirty years. That was all tall.
Thirty, it's twenty.
I'm just messing with it. I'm messing with her.
It'd been easier to count the ones under five.
You know.
And those people that are already there don't have the option to transfer unless legislation passes.
Okay. If, if. Anyway, we gotta wait on that. So delegate, could you do that?
Yeah, I'll keep looking. Well, how much time do they got to opt in?
New employees have to do.
I know, but how much time does the?
The legislation hasn't passed.
Okay, so it doesn't matter, it could be six months, it could be thirty.
Well, I, I'd like for the commission. Try to come up with something to help with. Bring them into this, and that's something we can discuss and maybe put on the agenda for the twenty eighth.
I, I mean, we won't know until that.
I know, but I mean, I, yeah, I mean, just. Maybe the commission can keep them up with something to go ahead and help them opt into this early.
They can't.
They can't.
Well, I thought you said.
Legislation passed.
No, the law has to pass.
The new employees can.
Okay, I'm confused, I thought they could, I thought they could go ahead and do it.
Legislation passes.
Yeah, okay, all right, I thought, I thought they could, they just didn't have the money. Okay, sorry, I'm confused.
Unless they set the day of passage as the day that the law takes effect. It'll happen on July the first. Of next year.
Do you have insight on that?
Address on that issue is. Different rumor, but, uh, there's a possibility that. EMS or emergency medical services might be on a call for a special session. Later this summer. So we might be addressing. Prior to, that's just rumor right now, that, that's gone. If there's likelihood of a special session coming later this summer, it might address a couple of issues, just being one of them.
Okay.
So. We had, obviously, we had that bill. We thought we had it done, and then it was. Last minute of the session, it went back to the fourth center.
Overburied, if something, but it was up to a little birdie.
Yeah, who knows? But, uh, anyway, we were trying to get some support built there, but, um, yeah. We're, there, there are good will down there to do, do without seeing any problems. With the, this, how, there was a few real technical issues about how to get the money, so.
Yeah.
That's always a problem, but, uh, but anyway, it may be something that's dreadful earlier. Do their special session, then I imagine normal rules will apply, either we make it effective, they pass it or ninety days after. Passed.
Okay.
So then, once it passes, you have none of it.
Okay.
Yeah, rest of it may be paid.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Well, just keep, if you guys hear before we do, just keep Ruth on the loop, so you know. Yeah, then, once we have information, we can get somebody from retirement in here to talk to everybody and, and. Maybe do a couple of sessions and let them know what their options are and explain them, and then we can meet and decide. What, if anything, we can do to help that, if those who want to transition to it, and then they can make a decision, fully informed and. See.
Yeah.
But y'all start thinking about what that incentive might be, you know, if we're able to help with something like that, like who should get it? You know, how it would help you, you know, think about retention. Because we wanna get people like to the five year mark and. Beyond, and beyond, so give that some thought, if you would.
Next is the tip is that.
Yeah, wait for that too. You have the resolution, Ruth? You have the resolution?
And then. You had asked, it should be, is it in your packet, the engineering thing? Also to clarify something we're worried on there, more specifically what we, uh, city, we used to let it for. So the tip twenty, you know, we use, or in here, you know, as we've done. And. So, thanks, Amy. Sent the resolution. And I'm assuming you guys already voted on it? Right.
Are they fancy in these?
So this is just a resolution to resolve it.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to dissolve the tip. All in favor?
I'll move them though. For now, we have the DRC grant accepted. So this is accepting the. Maybe corrections grant, it's a hundred ninety-six thousand, current eighty dollars.
And that's an increase, right?
Actually, I think it's, it's the same.
No, it's the same, which was an increase. Oh, I also know this side.
That Chris Paul, Michelle and Teresa.
Okay, well, awesome.
So we were looking through, like, her. Um, revenue streams and stuff, and she was like this close to them, between the grant and.
Oh, I know, she's done a great job.
That's great. So what's the progress since Vegas here about Montgomery, about putting a site down there, what were you thinking?
It proved last night, but America, you can use and have a building. Get that building prepared before eight. So, uh, and the calls we made, that's all covered, so. So we are getting ready for the, he's recording on the, that's.
Is that the one attached to the bakery?
Yeah.
And there was a. A gentleman that, I was, I think his name's Howard, I'm not sure, but he was interested in that side of building. I found this out by chance, they, I, I sent it to the week.
Yes, and that's why, we know that if, hey, if Karen's not interested, we have other people in our presence, so we're gonna go in and start that. Uh, standard, so.
Well, and it's right beside fruits of labor, which has similar programming, which we really like. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and Jay's looking at it, uh. And there's also a, uh. Jake Harrison. Were buildings being out by, which we. We're starting to. You all put a place down there. We're starting to put money into that section of the building.
So we're inside a great full statue, uh, things are. Just this last week are more different than. So. We're so excited, we got last Saturday, they were telling me.
I think, you know, if you could keep us apprised when that building is ready for red, you know, we can start getting a plan in place, because I think the will is here.
And I think the, um. We need to know what we.
I think there's enough.
We always had a multiple project. We can go in, those walls, none of those walls are laying there. Uh, if we did what we wanted. We could go in and take those walls out. Kind of reason. Formant to what we need, because I know there was a need for a lot of office area. Um, and like I said, all we have to do is take the wall out, we're just. Wire it up, and that, it was a doctor's office, so it truly chopped up and.
And we need to.
Can I have just coffee instead of a ton, and they come down and look like Karen at?
Yeah, and, and we can draw it out, what we need, is if this winter I'll get the street part of the house.
Tear down those walls. Tear down those walls.
Yeah.
So you could do that, just keep that something.
So I'll get involved.
About on. Move we accept the DRC grant.
Second, second all in favor, aye, aye.
Is a HAVA sub grant agreement? Michelle, do you wanna? Explain?
So, we were awarded, uh. Most of the money we asked for, they, um, instead of denying anyone's requests, they lowered the match amount on the E books. So it's a fifty percent match across the board, which is about five grand more for the commission than, than I originally asked for. That, but again, we get all the equipment that we asked for, that we're gonna, that we're gonna use, and. We get it for twenty grand instead of forty-one grand. This part is signed, you guys sign this, I send it to Secretary of State, and then they send us that twenty thousand dollar check. That's what this part is.
I'll make a motion to approve, second, all in favor?
We got the sales agreements on the next meeting, so. Should be getting the equipment sometime in July, that is, that is, yes, and it's hope.
Okay, the next thing was a request from Debbie Campbell to repoint Selena Bickers as the vet county and that, or member of the twenty twenty three.
I'll make a motion to approve, second, all in favor?
We just appointed her last year, right, is it annual?
Yeah.
It was to complete. A, uh.
Somebody's term.
Yeah, open term.
And then this one is a request. From Betty Kellon, the library director, to repoint Joseph Gravansky to a term that expires June thirty of the twenty eighth. I mean, we approve.
Second, all in favor? We got about a minute.
Well, before break, so we can just, yeah.
Yes, well, you tell me, I don't need a break.
We can just keep on trucking.
And then, the next. Is the, you know. This is the latter to the, gives all the member roster, so Secretary of State, when you're public service, different boards. That are reengaging.
All right, I mean, we approve letters.
Second, all in favor? Bye. It's hard to write.
I know, multi-pass.
Fact, I just had to shut up so I could finish it.
All right, there's also an election release and settlement agreement, also type of this opioid litigation, this is for Anne Neil and Riley. This needs to be, Tom's. Put nature.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Also have another letter that we received in regards to that opioid thing, we do well. What is, what is this letter, I'm sorry?
It's another settlement, the same things we've been signing. Um, settlement agreement forms, basically. For two more companies.
Has Anthony looked at it?
And we sent.
See, real quick.
It's not a real good, but, yeah.
Like eighty-three basis.
Yeah, that's the whole thing.
Was it the same settlement terms, it's just a different company? It's the way it's presented to us.
John, did you agree to that, I only heard Tom say aye.
Yeah, I think John said.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, the next thing was the. Of a letter that was sent to Erica Bogus.
Yeah, we just, we sent a letter to, um, Erica Bogus of the West Virginia House of Development Fund to express our interest in. Um, opting to purchase Wolf Creek Park property or pay off its debt. And avail ourselves of the same terms that Blue Water Development has been given by that office, and, um. We had to do it not for a tough, because we needed to get the letter in before we had another meeting. Um, in the intervening time, Ms. Bogus has already responded that no way is anybody getting the same terms as Blue Water Development. Um, including the government of that county. Or any other private company. So. Um, but anyway, I move that we approve the letter we already sent to Erica Bogus.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay. So you guys have asked to put a letter on for, um, Canton Hollow. Also Armstrong Creek. In regard to the PSC in regards to those water systems. Um. Because I think, I know you sent one to Jamie, maybe? I mean, it's been a while, you know, you sent one. And the Canton problems continue. Um, and there was discussion, you guys wanted to send a new letter, but we weren't sure what you want to say, so. We could always say, yeah, we'll send a letter and draft it, something and go. I don't know what you want.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we just need to re-raise it, let them know the problems are ongoing, um.
I agree.
You know, it's not moving fast enough, it smells like a sewer when you drive up Canton Hollow and.
Sure, there'll be a serious problem.
Serious problems in Armstrong Creek, and even though I know the PSC thinks about drinking water is the answer to everybody's prayers. Um, that process is not gonna move quickly enough with people, when people don't have water. And so, um. So I think it's more of a, you know, making the same request again and referencing our initial letter. Um. And, and updating, you know, how, how many more times, and Kevin would have this information, probably. And John, um, Armstrong Creek has been without water in the dates and that sort of thing. Um, and with Canton Hollow. Um. Anything we know about the progress or any delays? Should put in there.
Well, there's a hearing set by the PSC for Armstrong Creek on July twenty first.
Saw that.
Um. But we still, they still have customers going without water for multiple days. And if any person in this room went to go take a shower and didn't have water. For three or four days, or it's a one and then turns off, those people deserve a whole lot better service than what we're getting.
It happens to them all the time, it's not like it happened right. When my main line went out and I was about it for a week, that was a hardship, but if that happened every other week, I can't imagine.
No.
And that's, and that's why they're going.
No, so. I honestly feel that. That P S D cannot take care of its customers. And I wholeheartedly feel that the P S C needs to step in and do something faster than waiting another hundred and twenty to.
Feel like, based on what I've read, if he declares a state of emergency for that area, like he did for Raleigh County, when it happened there. That at least they could get around the contracting, the strict contracting rules to be able to fix it. More quickly, it would not make it a quick fix, but it would expedite things.
Uh, I think the state emergency was based around the water lines freezing for Beckley Water Company.
Well, but it, but the, the cause of the state of emergency getting declared was because the water lines broke and they were without water. The only thing, the only reason Armstrong Creek is not getting any attention is because there's not a commercial district there. No hospital, there are only people, we don't have anybody to stick up for them but us, so. Just think. I think we ought to do what I said. And if you have any other question, what, but I'll review them, so if we can go ahead and improve the letters in concept and I'll send around the final draft.
My motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
That's for Canton and Armstrong Creek?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Um, we, number thirteen is overtaken by events, um, Smithers did allocate the money to dredge that creek. Um, when he reached out to Steve Jim, I mean, he, he had him on schedule to do that.
I want to say.
Yeah.
Just so you know, no water, no creek dredging can be done unless it's approved by the West Virginia Department of Agriculture.
It's something they do every year, that it, like, he's on contract to do the small section every year, and so whatever they're doing, I'm not getting in it, because.
Yeah.
You know, if he's, if, if she's not doing it right, and I'm, you know. Put it on her.
Budget revision.
Yep, so here is last budget revision for June, most of it's standard, uh. Like for jury clearing, um. Sheriff's Law Enforcement, they have a lot of outside funding, have to revise to bless that, like for. Special programs, A P, that kind of thing. Visitors Bureau, Hotel Murtail, tax. Six hundred and sixty-two thousand from three hundred thousand, so most of that goes, there's Visitors Bureau. So. It's, it's standard.
Oh, you also mentioned, referred to Armstrong Creek, you know that letter, I don't remember when, I thought it was more recent, January, was it January, that's pretty bad, but, that. The state emergency office did contact Kevin, our emergency manager, about. That letter just last week, at the end of.
It was, yeah, because somebody else sent a letter.
Yeah, it was a delegate, uh.
Britt.
Yes, thank you, Britt.
Yeah, because I can, he said, what can I do to help, I said, aggravate the governor.
Yeah, so he sent a letter and then the state emergency people stepped in. So maybe if we can get another delegate to send a letter.
Yeah, well, I mean, we really, and, and maybe he can't, but I think legally, again, because I asked these questions before. But I think he can declare a state of emergency for Armstrong Creek, and that, I mean, they have been without water consistently, like, it's bad. All, all three of the major holidays that we just got through, they had no water. And they're going without it still, I mean, nothing has, has happened. All the money that they were going to get to make some of the improvements they needed to do to maybe make it slightly more stable for the residents. Got frozen because West Virginia American Water filed a, um, distressed utility claim against them, so that has to be warrant. Though until that whole process plays out, there's nothing to fix, you know, they have no funds to fix anything, and things just keep breaking. So it probably is going to end up being taken over by West Virginia American Water, but even, I mean, right now, we need, they, we need to have the ability to get things fixed quickly and get parts quickly. Up there for them, and preferably some, uh, financial help for that, too.
The governor obviously has broad powers in that area, now with the legislation we passed, uh, sixty days after his declaration. Of emergency, he will be called back in session automatically. Uh. The legislature will, to deal with, so. I don't know if he'd be hesitant to do it because of that reason, uh, I don't know. So, uh, I don't know what, what his thinking would be, not doing something for the revenue issue, but he came along for a long time, and it's a, it's a, it's so basic, I mean, water. So, uh, I don't know, I don't know, I did see the, uh, delicate Britt letter, you know, trying to urge, and I'd be glad to send it, absolutely. No problem at all.
And, and anything to expedite the repairs to the, um, sewage infrastructure at Canton Hollow.
Well, a lot of money is in disposal, uh, we make sure of that. Uh, so he does have a lot of money in his disposal related. Means, there's money available if he wants to make it a bit.
Well, it's, we've asked, I think it's vast, probably, whatnot. And the P S C had a legislation passed where they can actually step in and make the takeover happen without going through all the hoops.
Yes.
Okay, Kevin has his hand up on here.
Oh, okay.
Kevin.
Good morning, Commissioner, um, just to elaborate on what you're speaking of. Uh, yes, I was contacted by the State Emergency Management Division Office, who I am diligently staying in contact with almost every day regarding this, we have an open. Case right now with Armstrong Creek P S D to try to supply their citizens with water as needed. Um, I usually talk to the, um. The lady down there at the P S C either once a day or every other day to follow up with them to. Ensure that they're pumping, and every day they keep telling me they're moving water right now, however. Um, that is not what I'm hearing from the citizens of that area as well, that they still either have low pressure, no pressure, or no water, so. We are diligently working with that, try to keep the water down there as much as possible, uh, I do have two pallets that are staged here right now to go down there. In the event of, so we're trying to stay ahead of the game, just for that reason.
Can you guys, John, you, Bill, and Kevin, can you guys give us, um, update, I'd like updates at least every other day on Armstrong Creek while it's going on.
May I do advise updates?
Yeah, ju- just during the week, um, during the week unless something happens over the weekend, but I, I would just like to know, you know, anytime anything changes down there. If you're giving out water or anything you're doing. Because we, we need to get the information together on, uh, how. All their dates that they've been without water, because we want to let the governor know, so he can understand, we're not dealing with, you know, a small outage, this has been like a, a sustained issue. He has to sign all of these.
I would do it, well, I understand.
Yeah, understandable. But you also wouldn't buy them. All right, thanks, Kevin.
I don't know, Hannah, I think you have all the copies.
Yeah, he does, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget revisions.
Okay.
All in favor, aye.
We are in sixteen. Yeah, that one, 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 this. That obsession, yeah, okay, so that, those one on that.
Angela?
What were they on then?
Uh, which one?
Uh, maybe Ashley Brenner or Ben Girlami?
I can see them, aye. There's actually.
Okay.
All right, so you guys in your packets, and I'll have, um, Wilbur and bring up. Their presentation, but you guys should have a copy of their P D F, of their plan, so, and I think you guys should also have the minute, um, the planning commission meeting. It's just there, okay, um, but I'm gonna read, read what the commission did, or planning commission did, and then I'll let the applicants give their spiel, and we do have some. Citizens, I think, that would like to speak as well. So, um, the planning commission met on the fifth at two o'clock. And, um, the application was for the case of Z dash five-three-seven dash twenty-three dash one, it's a quest of Ashley Brenner. And Ben Girlami, they wanted to change the land classification, which is currently rural residential, to B three tourism. Um, it is a seventeen point eight zero acre New River Cliff, um, right of survivorship by survey two dash two-nine-seven. Um, I'm just gonna read you what the planning commission, um, voted on, and then they can give their press. So, um, Mr. Willis made a motion to deny the request for rezoning. They considered it spot zoning and not directly off a state maintained road, um, Mr. Davis seconded, and it was a unanimous decision. Um, so if you can unmute, Ashley, and she can, um, kind of go through her presentation, for you guys, any questions. Ashley, you're free to speak if you'd like to.
I were having trouble hearing you a little bit, um. Happy to answer any questions, uh, but I didn't have your ask.
Have you guys had a chance to look at the presentation?
Yeah, I don't have any question.
So basically, I'll just, um, they have a seventeen acre site, and as you see there, they would, are requesting basically to have, um, glamping sites. And they have the use of a shower house that was approved by the Fayetteville Health Department, it's a portable shower house that they will have maintained, so that is their request. And B three tourism is because cabins and campgrounds fall into B three tourism, as of now, state code requires, clamping is the same to the camp.
So who's going to maintain the water out of the bathhouse?
Cars, uh, first water and black water tanks, it would be due by.
And then, how's the road going in, is it a two, can two cars go on this road?
It is a single lane, uh, dirt road, Tomlin Road is, and then I'm leading up to that Bachman Road is also a pretty.
I didn't understand that.
Okay, so, um, from our understanding, um, it is a twelve foot easement to the property all of. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the property, um, it, Tomlin is all a road, it's a easement going onto their property.
So it's a, it's a one-lane.
Correct.
One-car road.
Is a gravel, correct, is a gravel, yeah.
Right, but, what was the planning commission's recommendation?
And what was this reason, we didn't get their minutes, so.
Oh, sorry. They were, I didn't, like, um, their motion was to deny it based on it being spot zoning and based on the, um, it is not directly off a state maintained road. So that's just their recommendation to deny.
Can I consult it, please, thank you.
What's the objection to spot zoning, just out of curiosity? As the attorneys say, it's not illegal, it's just. Ground. It's not that you can't do it, it's just that if you have a bunch of spot zoning, then it becomes.
Well, that, yeah, that I understand.
Usually, like, they shouldn't have zone, if it's spot zoning, really.
Right, yeah, and the planning commission, when they make a recommendation, they don't have to have a reason, they just request to approve or deny. If the property owners, if you guys deny it, the property owners can appeal it to the Board of Zoning Appeals, they have to have a reason, a finding of fact, and. So the planning commission, they don't really have to have a reason, but normally.
Did any of the neighbors show up at the?
Um, yes, and there, I don't know if you have, um, petition, I did email it, but, um. They're, they're, neither, that's fine, um, there was a petition. And then, one of the neighbors were here as well. With a PowerPoint presentation.
Some of these other addresses, Edmond Road, Ridgeview. High Street.
Yeah, I mean, there's no rules, there's nobody can, anybody.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how many neighbors have signed this, but it looks like several, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I.
There's also an electronic, uh, petition, that's on one, with a hundred signatures.
There was on that, on the electronic one, I don't know if that will actually stand.
Because the person, Rita kills.
Yeah, the person that created the online petition that had over a hundred signatures, they originally did it as an R V park, so I did tell them that we couldn't accept that petition. Uh, but there was already like sixty signatures prior to that, so I don't think we can uphold that, because he unfortunately had the wrong information there, so.
I mean, I'm mainly interested in what the, the people who are going to be directly affected by this.
Do you think there is a property, a joint property?
I see there's several Bachman Road addresses here, Tomlin Road addresses, one, two, three, four, five, Bachman, two, Tomlin, Jordan Road, is that? It's on Bachman also, and here's some more Bachman addresses.
This is opposition, one of the people who opposed that, put this together.
I would love to see my Mr. Thor now.
You have the petition.
All right, we're just seeing this, folks, so, just trying to get. Thought of.
What do you want, the people in opposition, or to speak real quick?
I think, I think if we all take a look at these notes, I mean, I think a lot of people have already.
Okay.
Express their concerns here.
Who put this together? You did a good job.
The teacher, I mean.
Well, I was gonna say, this is, this is very impressive.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm.
I don't know if you folks had a chance to see it, a lot of presentations, and the way that this is grouped and put together, it's. Very informative, quickly looking at it.
I recognize Bachman Road, I'm just trying to figure out where it is. Where is it?
One of the wide ones.
Oh, wait, wait.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm like, I know I've seen it, I was just trying to think of where I.
Yeah, it's a Mary Mary, I think I've seen it on the.
Yeah, I've seen that, um. Would anybody like to comment against, I mean, just make it real short? If you want to. Go ahead, step up here to the mic and say your name.
Brittany Chager, I live on Ridgeview Drive, which is off of Bachman, and I've lived there since two thousand fifteen. Um, and I'd just like to add that at that polling commission meeting, where every single homeowner that, you know, shares a poverty line with this property in question, was at that meeting. So not only do we have that petition, but I'd say that. You know, the homeowners that share a poverty line do not want this to be rezoned from that rural residential to the three, four, some district, um. You know, when we bought our property, we liked it because it was rural, it was quiet, not because one day I thought I'd share a property line with the campground. Bachman Road, like we said, is super narrow, if you pass a car, both cars are going to use the ditch line in order to pass each other, and Tomlin Road is even more narrow than Bachman. So not only am I, you know, worried about the road infrastructure that's not set up for more car traffic, there'll be more noise pollution from car traffic as well as campground. Or campground users, um. And you know, I think that these homeowners have a plan in place, but regardless of this plan, you know. Changing this zoning from rural residential to some sort of commercial property just does not fit in with this area. Bachman Road is a residential place. I don't, in my opinion, nothing against these people, um, it's, it's campground that would belong to Bachman.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else real quick? Need you to come up here so people can actually hear you that's out in the internet land.
Um, my name's Walter Personias, um, I'd like to have it, all the same people, if the original meeting are here, in, by show hands, all the people in opposition.
Hi, I'm Kristen Personias, and my property is at the intersection of Bachman and Tomlin, and so we're the, the first house, the first property on this, this shared driveway driveway. And these, uh, the owners of the property, you know, have no plan in place for maintenance of the driveway, they have no campground attendant there. Um, it's going to be some sort of online check-in, so I just feel like, you know, they're putting the burden on neighbors that don't want the campground in the first place. And, um, you know, my husband and I, I, you know, we, we are familiar with, you know, campgrounds in the area from working in the recreation industry and. Yeah, there's just, there's quite a few problems associated with them that we just don't really want on our, our private driveway. It's not state maintained and that, the section, um, that is right by our house, we've measured it, and, um, our deed does say a twelve foot right away, but. In some sections of that driveway, um, which is one tenth of a mile of the driveway to their campground, um, it's only ten feet wide. And, um, there's no way to, um, to make it any bigger, our garage is a foot from the, the driveway and our water meter. The house is ten feet and, um, Ed Hambrik, um, he, he, um, owns the other side of the driveway and there's, there's some pretty good size like cliffs in it. That even the water company couldn't last through in two thousand when they were putting that in, um. So we're, we're pretty concerned about that, also just the campground, smoke, the dust, um, yeah, just all that traffic, um. Yeah, one of my neighbors has, uh, you know, a pretty bad breathing problem. Might speak up to you about, yeah, just that he's not going to be able to stay out on his front porch at all from the dust. Yeah, and I think that's, that's been the most part, yeah, just the blind spot squeezes out the driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we want to let the property in or she?
Yep. If we can hear.
She's still unmuted. Ashley, are you still unmuted?
Uh, yeah, I'm unmuted now, guys. Yep, so we were at the meeting a couple of weeks ago and sent all the feedback to the neighbors and also the petition. Um, I don't know if there's anything we can say that we didn't say that day, uh, just in response with. To what was just said about the driveway, we did offer to maintain and potentially save that road. Um, I'm, I'm hearing that that's not something that the neighbors want either, but just to, to respond to that comment, we did discuss maintaining this part of.
For my part, there's. I mean, I think we ought to accept the planning commission's recommendation.
Yep.
So I move, I move that we accept the planning commission's recommendation and deny the request to rezone the property.
I'm sorry, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming out, it really helps us when we can hear from the people directly affected by our decisions.
And plus, this was really great.
I'll tell you what, it read like a legal brief.
Yeah.
And I'm a lawyer, I'm reading it. And if not this, then this, and if not this, then this, so very well done.
You just go, all right, let me see, what, what we got here?
We're at ten fifteen.
I mean, I'm not really good with it, I think she made me miss it, but. Can we take a five minute break? Hey, um, can you give us a report on all the other ones?
You ready?
Just ma'am.
All right, so I did not do a PowerPoint, we only have two cases today, so I'll just need to do the pictures. Um, so the first case is case one seven four, two six one two Lock Alley Road. This is a Fayette County resident. The beautification committee didn't meet and felt as though the, um, appears to be unusable and unsafe for human habitation, the roof of the dwelling is compromised. It appears to be in a general state of disrepair and of course it is completely, partially or completely collapsed. Um, beautification met on, um. May and, May twenty fifth and recommended that it be demolished and legally disposed of within thirty days. Now, my understanding of doing a quick deed search, I believe the property owner has, um, deceased at the twenty twenty-two. I didn't find a will, but I did find, um, some fiduciary information, which I'll pass that on to Anthony, but. This is there on Lock Alley Road, right?
Well, I make a motion to approve the beautification committee's recommendations and assess the civil penalties per our policy. All in favor?
Aye.
I remember that, Dylan.
Good job.
I remember that. That was good.
Yeah. All right.
Gave him a cheat sheet.
He cheated on N R D R D A too.
All right, so the next case is two oh nine, it is four oh seven eight Dempsey Road, which is right off of, um, sixty-one, so beautification met on May twenty-fifth. And, um, felt as though it is abandoned and not being used as a business or residence, um, appears to be unusable and unsafe for human habitation. It's partially covered with vines and vegetation, um, there are no windows and is in general state of disrepair, and they recommended the property be demolished and legally disposed of within thirty days. And this person, according to our records, does live in Fayette County, even though they've not responded to any letters that I've sent, but they have a Fayette County address for taxes.
Any questions, is that?
No.
I make a motion to approve the beautification committee's recommendations and assess the civil penalties per our policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those are the only two.
Oh, I thought you had a third one.
I think we had, it got taken off because the property owner sold it at the last second, so I have to reindicate the.
Okay, all right. I guess.
Now you have fifty minutes, so the next one didn't want to be someone that you've just seen and they.
Okay, well, I think, I'd like to move that we go into executive session to discuss the personnel issues of park director and operations manager.
I'm good with that. All right, I want to call the meeting back to order.
Never had anybody request a hearing and then not show up. Those are some.
Yeah, there's so many, well, there's me too.
Yeah, I mean, so basically, just quickly, you guys, um, made a motion to demolish, I'm sorry, I should. This is seven six, it's actually three zero, um.
Oh, I remember.
Six, well, um, so this property you guys did make a recommendation, demolished. We had, um, one brother lives, um, after some investigation, we found him in Fayette County, we had him served by sheriff. I also had the other brother served in, um, Allegheny County, now he was not served until June. So, but the one brother did call and request a hearing. Um, the gentleman that requested the hearing today is Dallas Vance.
Which one requested the hearing?
The one that lives here in Fayette.
So the one that was served on June second.
He has not called before.
He hasn't heard from him.
Right, um, but the brother did request the hearing, he knew of the sign, and as far as I know, he is not here. So.
Since they didn't show up, I think we have to pick with the original plan. That was presented and accepted.
Only thing we may have, the way that it's written, they have ten days, I don't know with the brother just being served, if we need to.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing I was trying to.
Yeah, two different.
Look at the.
One was served, the other one wasn't.
Right, because the one brother called, right, I was hoping the other brother would be here today so we can say, have you talked to your brother, but.
Did I see that?
I really think we need to put it on the twenty eighth since he was just served on.
Unfortunately, the brother does not have a phone. He sometimes resides in that house.
The one, that one?
The one that required, that called and requested the hearing?
He didn't show up today, so I am less concerned about him. Um, but, but the, the one that got noticed.
Give the ten days.
We found him, right?
Yeah, as, as far as this, it says he was personally served, um, in Allegheny County, um, on six two is the best I can. Yeah.
Maybe we should set it for the second meeting in July, make sure they're both served again, or at least try to serve the one brother again.
You mean June?
I mean, no, I mean July, because it took them how long to serve?
Well, it took them, from the time I sent them a check, it took them a month.
So, yeah, that's what I'm, I'm thinking, like, we want to give enough notice so they have at least the ten day notice by the time they're.
Yeah, because the ten, they, they were served on six two, uh, six twelve, he had ten days to call and get on the agenda. But I mean, that's up to you guys, I don't.
Ten calendar days or, I thought it was.
They looked at the letter, it may be ten days. See the servers that was sent, but. Anthony sent this.
Because if it's business days, we're not in.
It says pursuant to the ordinance within ten days of service of this company, it doesn't say business days.
So that should be six twelve.
It's the code. Uh, he does not cite the code, I'm sorry. But we never had anybody knock that one.
I mean, I'm just. I think it's business.
No. Usually they do business days, but I don't.
Yeah, normally they do, but I don't. So that's why we have the dollar check, do you do the same? Yes, ninety dollars. We have to pay an absentee fee.
Also believe that the one brother was in the house multiple times when the doors were kicked in by the sheriff's department.
Yeah, there was fourteen, um, that house had fourteen nine one one calls.
Did we come out of executive decisions, there was no decisions made?
Yeah, the administrator made some recommendations with regard to hires for, um. We advertised the, uh, park director and operations manager and made some salary recommendations, and I'm going to make motions based on those recommendations now. So for park director, um, she recommended we hire Brian Good at an entry level salary of forty-two thousand a year to be reviewed in six months. Um, for an increase, uh, based on his qualifications and performance. And then for operations manager, um, she recommended that we hire current employee Jerry, what Jerry's lesser? Atkins, uh, ended that job vacated by Wayne and, um. At the salary, what salary? At, at the salary of the former operations manager, uh, he's also been there longer, so it's not like we're putting him in their job and giving him a salary he hasn't. Uh, earned. So I make those motions that we hire both of those individuals at those amounts.
Second, all in favor?
Brian will be next one, so.
Immediately. All right.
Yeah, write me a new, a little list.
New cheat sheet.
Cheat sheet. I'm, I'm gonna have it up here, I'll go, I'll see. Okay, so what's the decision we have for Angeles?
I'm, uh, I'm asking.
Michael.
Yeah. I'm just trying to find out if it's calendar.
I understand.
I think it's.
No, I understand, I think they know too.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's calendar days, then, then we're fine on service and we can proceed today.
Yeah.
If it's business days, we are not.
Right, yeah. Like I was hoping, the, the one brother, so we at least know that he's not here.
And he's the one who requested, which is.
And we don't want to do that.
We don't even know what, you know, the consequences are if you requested a hearing, I'm pretty sure, like any other hearing, you'd fall.
Right, yeah.
But.
So this is the first time this has ever happened?
Yes. Yeah, most people requested hearing, they are here.
So, ten, that business days will be?
Yeah, but it would just be whenever.
Yeah.
And nineteenth also, so the twenty-first, yeah.
And then I'll have to reach out to Anthony and see if I have to serve the one that lives here.
I really suspect we're gonna have to do it, and we're gonna have to send it out. Well in advance, given that it took thirty days to serve him.
Yeah.
And, and it makes sense, I believe, they can't find him, you can't find him, you don't want to have a date set.
Well, that's the thing, they have ten day, they have ten days from the time they're served.
Yeah, but it may take us thirty days, like you said, if I'm, if we don't set it out far enough, it doesn't, uh.
Yeah, basically, I mean, maybe not even, if it's ten business days, not even put it until.
Till he's served.
But he is served, this one guy is served, he was given, it says ten days, basically, the business or, business days, he still has a few more days to come back up. To get put on your guy's agenda. So unfortunately, we can't call the other brother because he did not leave a phone. He does not own a phone, he's already.
Well, so, I mean, if, if we give him the number of days, just if we presume it's to, what Amy said, the twentieth, we put him on the twenty-eighth agenda. If he doesn't last it by the twentieth, we can take action on twenty eighth without any problems, because the one brother didn't show, the other brother was served and, and if he doesn't call. Contact us, then, then I think we're covered.
Yeah, that's well within, in business days.
Yeah, let's just, let's just, I'll invoke this caution for the one, the twenty eighth. Um, I'm going to postpone this case, uh, with regard to Dallas Vance's property to the twenty eighth for the reasons I mentioned.
Second, all in favor? I will contact the Oak Hill Fire Department, ask the chief to show up for that hearing.
I have.
I also asked the, the, uh. I also ask the, the, uh, Sheriff Department to show up for that hearing too. Now we got, um. Oh, is it, okay, well, yeah.
So I moved to postpone that until July, once and eight, guys, twenty.
Twenty-six.
Six.
Second, all in favor? Most adjourned. Yeah.